Councilmember Johnny Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Jenna Simpson.
Here.
The Wilson.
Here.
Brantley.
Here.
Councilmember Fred Linton.
Here.
Mayor, oh, Councilmember Louis Decker.
Here.
And Mayor Sean Skipper.
I'm here. All right, I believe we have a quorum. Item two of the invocation, Councilman Brantley, would you lead us in the prayer, please?
Father God, we thank you to this day. God, we thank you for leading a guy who is here without a credit or protection of those in attendance, those on the dais, and all throughout the city. God, pray that you would lead and guide our decisions and our conversations, God, that we would accomplish your goals and your objectives. In your Son Jesus' name we pray and worship.
And Councilwoman, so would you lead us in the pledge of service?
Show me in the U.S. flag pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We'll move this on to item four, public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time, less not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature, or may address a specific agenda item, and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. We have two comments this evening. The first one is Mr. Jason Elliott.
He's actually meeting with Ed right now, so it's on that topic.
Okay. Then our second and final speaker will be Wally Deeds.
I'm Wally Deeds, 5201 Diesel Drive, Dickinson. Oh, my, during my term on council, I was a champion of keeping the EDC a separate entity. It's what the voters voted on when the EDC was created, and I would encourage you to keep it separate. From what I can tell with this agenda, trying to change the EDC bylaws, which will essentially, and the management of the EDC, which will essentially make the EDC a city department. Although that language isn't used, it's, you know, that's what's going to happen. I think I've heard plans that there are, that, or I've heard that there are plans to move the EDC offices to City Hall. You're going to have the city manager functioning as the CEO, which would be responsible for all hiring. The EDC employees will all be city employees, and I'm just against that. I, I think the, the EDC was formed to have a broad range of expertise. And at least on my term in council, that's what we were trying to bring to the table with, with the members that we appointed, is a varied background of people that sit on the EDC that could contribute. I've also heard that there is an effort to maybe appoint one more council person, which I think currently there are three. I don't know if that's allowed by state law. I'm sure you guys have run that through, you know, your attorney. But, you know, that's essentially a majority. And be interesting to see if you have to post, if you do that, if you have to post a meeting notice for the EDC every time council meets, because you'll have a quorum of the EDC sitting on the dais here. One thing that I don't, I really don't understand, and maybe it'll come out in the discussion of the vote on the, the two agenda items are there, is that since the EDC is a separate board and a separate corporation, any changes to their bylaws has to be approved by the EDC board. And I couldn't find any record of where EDC has met to change their bylaws as directed by city council. And once again, I'm sure you've run that by your attorney, but, you know, who knows? The public doesn't know that it, you know, what the status is. I would encourage you to not make the EDC what essentially will be a, a city department. Thanks.
All right, thank you. That'll take us to item five, action items for consideration. Item five A, consideration of possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, approving an administrative services agreement with the Dickinson Economic Development Corporation. I'll turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Malanson.
Thank you. Mayor, council, thank you very much. Really kind of where this administrative services agreement comes in is really the amount of overlap of services that the city needs as well as the EDC. One of the big areas that we're looking at is, is obviously having a very capable communications director is, is important, not just for the city, but also the EDC. And, and obviously, especially when you look at things, whenever we're working on marketing the city for developers and so forth, being able to reliably produce that type of material is important. You also have some services that we currently do not provide, and the big one being GIS mapping, especially on demand, which is oftentimes needed, because a, a developer may have a very specific request of what they want to see on the mapping and so forth has come up. And so, instead of outsourcing that, being able to bring that in-house, as well as some of the things the city needs to incorporate many of the engineering firm pavement assessments and things of that nature, to actually have someone on staff that can do that. The Water District has, has actually a GIS mapper on their, on their staff. And so, for us to have someone that would have an equal skill set would be tremendous for us to have a more robust system, not just for the EDC, but for the city as we're engineering out future projects for the city. And so what the agreement really comes down to is, is for a set fee, the EDC, and very similar, eerily similar in fact, to the DMD agreement, is, is for a set price administrative services would be provided as outlined in the scope of services area, largely defined by many of the city's secretarial duties, because the EDC and Management District both have to follow the same laws as the city council. So, so having the Open Meetings Act and Public Information Act training and ability to handle those type of things is very important to have, as well as the GIS mapping, the marketing, and, and other oversight as well. But what you'll see is, is that really, and having worked with both DMD and a membership of the, of the EDC, kind of showing that really a lot of the services that are currently being paid for on individual line items of the EDC and the ma, not really the Management District, because there's really not much of a line item there for administrative services, but definitely on the EDC side, there are some, some savings along the way. It's not just a full-on expense to the EDC in many of those, many of those line items. Because right now, there is the outsourcing of a lot of the IT historically. There's also been a lot of work done contractually that, that would probably come in-house through this agreement. So, that's kind of where we're at. Questions, comments, as, you know, just wanted to open that up to you guys, give you all a little background of kind of how we got here.
We do need a motion. Is there a motion to approve the service agreement?
Move to approve.
Or there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Councilman Wilson, is there any discussion, questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I do want to.
Councilman Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say, the reason I seconded the motion to table it last time and voted to table it is because I was under the impression that EDC had not had an opportunity to look over it. The EDC president, myself, and Theo did have a top, top-level, 3,000-foot view of, of, of the administrative service agreement, which talked about amounts and what positions would be afforded out of the deal. But after that, we, the three of us didn't have a meeting like that. But after that, for the next four months or so, I put it on the DMD agenda. So they had questions, they had comments, concerns, clarifying questions. And so we kind of worked it out. And I had actually forgotten about that initial meeting, because we had been talking about it in depth over the last few months. But remembering that there was an initial meeting about this, so I'm definitely in, in favor of it at this point.
Other questions or comments on this?
Yeah.
Councilman Brantley.
Mr. City Manager, in the scope of services, it states the city and the EDC acknowledge that from time to time conflicts between cities employees' primary responsibilities in the city requests for services from the EDC may arise. Okay? What type of checks and balances do we maintain in this agreement as far as approval of invoices and making sure that time is properly allocated?
Well, I think that's kind of one of those areas where, you know, similar to, let's say you have your city, where I think you'd have your, your two areas where you're going to have the most issue with that will be either, either city secretarial services for, say, agenda setting and so forth. And the other would, would likely come from, say, our communications director. You know, we may have some things that are coming up that are obviously important to the city, community events. But at the same time, you also have a, a big, let's say we're, we're entertaining a very important developer to come into town, and we want to have certain materials. I think the big thing is, is the checks and balances in that is, is very similar to other, in other departments is, is that if there's a, an issue, you know, time management is going to be a huge part of it on my part, and making sure that if, and one of the main things is, is say, Courtland, or yourself, or, or any other board member thinks, you know, what I'd hope is, is that we have the open communication to say, hey, I don't, you know, on this item, I want to make sure we have X amount of hours dedicated to it. Then what I want to do in the weeks leading up to it is to make sure and have some benchmarks. My expectation is, is that, on your side of things, is that you need to see a, a good product. And so, my job at that point is, through this ASA, is that I have to provide that to you. And if, if there needs to be an after-action where you're saying, hey, or, you know, any board member says, hey, you know, we need to bring it, I'd hope that that would come up either privately or in an EDC board meeting and say, this is what I want to see improved in. I would say is that I would expect that we will have hiccups here and there, just because with any department, every department has leans on city secretary's office and marketing department pretty heavily. So that, that would be some of the answers to that. So some of the checks and balances kind of sits in your, in your notice. Like, let's say I'm absolutely not listening to anything council or the EDC is saying, or staff is not being responsive, and I'm not doing anything about that, then there's the 30-day-out opportunity. And what I would say to that is, is that's why it's imperative that, that I produce a very good product for you guys with, with the staff that we have, because there is a relatively easy way for the EDC to step away from the, from the table.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Councilman Decker.
On the history of the 4B, we had a city manager that thought she wanted that title. And she got it. Against a, a number of people on council that was against it. Eventually, she decided she didn't want to be over that group.
I'm going to interrupt real quick. Are you talking about the ASA or the bylaw changes?
Talking about just general. Okay. It has something to do.
Okay.
I am not in favor of any board member on this council to be on 4B. It took quite a long time to get people that wanted to serve. And it probably was a direction situation, but I still feel that way. We've been there, done that, and now we're seemingly doing it again. What are we going to end up with, a majority? Even three, one, two, we don't need them. Of the EDC to serve in this capacity, but there are people left on EDC might as well not even be serving, the way I look at it, the way I've read this, and I did spend the time this week reading this. And it is, it's just, I just hate to see us go from here to here and not be in the middle somewhere.
All right, any other comments or questions about the ASA?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
The city has always had an administrative service agreement with the EDC. This isn't anything new. I think this one is more spelt out, which it need to be. That was one of the problems with it before. Some of the areas weren't very clear. I know one of them had to do with hiring policy, things like that. And that even when the EDC was given the opportunity to hire a CEO at that time, they were supposed to be following the city's policies. But at the time, the administrative agreement wasn't specific enough to carry that. I've read this thing, I think it's exactly what needs to be done. I believe stuff needs to be spelled out. I believe we're, we're trying to confuse the two issues about the bylaws and one with the service agreement. The service agreement is entirely different from what we're doing. We have, like I said, we have a service agreement with a management district. This is not something that's just going to jump out, I think, and bite somebody. It's, it's like everything else in today's world. It's very specific. It need to be very specific, and I think, I think it's another fine job as to where it is right now.
Appreciate it. And I will say, it's great work too, Justin and crew on, on, on working through it, because, you know, one of the big things, to your point, Councilman Wilson, is under the ASA, we currently have, it really, at the end of the day, while the finance department took on what was in the ASA, they also took on some things that were not in the ASA. They were a little, you know, the finance department of the EDC. When, when you actually read the ASA, they were really supposed to be the bookkeeper mainly and cut some checks. But, you know, there's been some areas where, you know, the city did take on more of a role, which is, I mean, kudos to Harrison and, and the crew to do all of that. But, so what we really want to do is try to spell out kind of fully what the relationship should be between city organization and the EDC. And, you know, one of the big things is, is being able to ensure that HR policy is standard, to ensure that procurement policy is standard, to, and so forth. That kind of goes beyond the current ASA, but, you know, has been something that, remember, EDC, you know, you know, EDCs and management districts fall under a lot of the same, almost all the same laws as, as cities in how they govern themselves. And so, and, and that's including, you know, federal EEOC laws. And so I think it's very good that, that if we were to ensure that the ASA has an HR, a full-time HR director who's making sure that, hey, you know, we're, you know, anytime, if, 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 if there's going to be a hiring that's going to serve the EDC that is being done, and you're check-marking saying, yes, you've met all your federal requirements, and you did everything you were supposed to do. So, so that's really a lot of the ASA too, is, and it's also to kind of bring it up to the times to say, you know, the cost of service is, is, you know, even just for finance and some of the HR and all that, you know, is, is a little bit more than, than what was in the old agreement, so.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Brantley.
I, I just want to say that I, I think if, understanding that we have other agreements to talk about, but as long as we can maintain that system of checks and balances and understand that, that this agreement and the subsequent agreements to be discussed have potential to outlive all parties involved. This agreement on its face, along with the coinciding policy changes, allow the EDC and the city to operate more efficiently and effectively by developing an accountability structure and provides value through shared services that, if effectively managed, will provide great benefits to the EDC. I would like to make a motion to amend.
Well, why don't you just, what specifically would you like to amend, and then we can just amend it?
So, section two, services and payment. The city will provide, and this is the amendment, but the city will provide itemized invoices and charge the EDC for services as described in the exhibit.
Okay. Is that it? Do you, Councilman Simpson, you made the motion, I believe. Do you, you accept the change?
I'll amend my motion.
Okay. And you, I assume, agreed to, well, Councilman Wilson, a second, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? I'd say for my part, I think this is a very, it's a very small percentage of the EDC's budget on the whole that lets us provide some better services. It, it a little streamlined things, helped, helped everybody out involved. So I think it's, it's a good arrangement, it's well put together, explained. And, you know, the EDC will look at it, at, at the next meeting, and we'll, we'll ratify amend or whatever, so. Okay.
Mayor, if I could make one, just one comment for, for the council's sake. Under statute, you have, as the governing body over the EDC, you have full access to all EDC finances and expenditures. And so, and this again, this is not in favor or against this, this particular agreement, but not only for this agreement, but for anything, you have freedom to access those books and records and to see what's, what funds are being done. This is just would essentially be a function of their, of their financing to formalize one of the, one of the budget items for the administration. So if there's any issue that happens on this agreement, then by the agreement itself, and then plus your authority under statute, we can address this later and, and fix whatever problem may be. If that means terminating the agreement, it could be that. If it means, you know, providing additional coverage in the agreement, we can do that too. All that's, all that's in your purview is, is council, as you oversee the.
Because the EDC is subject to council oversight, is that correct?
That's right.
The statute lays it out that way, is that correct?
Yeah, so I mean, the verbatim from, from the statute is that corporations authorizing unit, which is you, is entitled to access the corporations' books and records at all times. You will approve all programs and expenditures of a corporation, and annually review any financial statements of the corporation. So within that broad authority, this, this fits right in that. And so, a lot of EDC and city council arrangements are under ASAs like this.
All right. All right, there's no other questions or comments. We'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
With one no, the motion carries. So moves on to item 5B, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, approving and accepting the amended bylaws of the Dickinson Economic Development Corporation, a state of Texas type B economic development corporation. I'll turn this back over to our city manager.
Mayor, council, so what we have here, some just bylaw, what big issue was, was that, you know, and there's some policy decisions that you guys will get to make at the end of the day. But what we have is basically some proposed amended bylaws. The majority of the ones that I was working through largely had to do with making the bylaws compatible with the administrative services agreement. Obviously, you don't want to have bylaws that would, that would contradict an ASA. To answer a question that was posed, is obvious, on our end of things, is that we're, we will be presenting the ASA and, and bylaws to the EDC as well, for them to look through, redline some things. And if something that is, that needs to be changed and needs to come back to you guys, and, you know, get, you know, kind of have that reconciliation bill, if you will, we can definitely work through that. But the main thing is, is that to put together a set of bylaws that really match the ASA, there are some other things in there that you guys can decide on whether or not, what policy y'all want to go with. The big thing that I would, that I would say is, is that, again, you have, if I were to just kind of pull up real quick here, you know, deciding on how you guys want to handle, like, board composition and so forth, there are two routes that can be taken. On that, one is to spell it out in your bylaws, like, very clearly. The other is, it would be an area where if you decided that you wanted to create as a council a, a broad policy on how you guys handle board appointments as a whole, is another area to look at. So I just wanted to kind of pose that there's, bylaws are one way to deal with it. There are others, and, and maybe it's a combination of bylaw and, and policy on how y'all want to say it. With that, I'm, I'm going to kick it back to you guys.
All right, is there a motion to accept?
I'd like to move to approve with one amendment.
All right, well, just go ahead and, what's, what's your amendment?
Article two, section two dot one, where it says the business and affairs of the corporation shall be managed by a board of directors. The board composed of seven directors. The director shall be appointed by city council, and at least three directors must not be employees or officers of the city or members of city council. I'd like to amend that to four.
Okay. Is there a second?
We can't make that motion. That's, that's statutory. So the, the way the statute reads is that, it's, it's written negatively, but essentially you have a seven-member board. The statute's saying is you can have up to four members of the board be council members or city employees. And so it's written in the negative. So if, so.
How would you, because you see what his intent is, I think. So how would you change it for that intent?
So you don't want no more than three council members on, on the boards, what you're saying, or city employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think the charter says.
The charter forbids city employees anyway, but.
Eliminate city employees, then.
Okay, but I think he's wanting it to be, he's wanting the end result to be three members of council as opposed to four.
I'm, I'm just making sure this council understands that that's, that the motion, so if you, if you prove it as amended, then you're.
We're saying no more than three. Okay.
That's clear for.
Figure out how to write that in there, I guess.
You can have up to four.
The state stat, yes, the state statute.
It was passed, it was passed last election, or election before that.
But he's wanting to amend that section to say that only three.
Yeah, I don't want to violate the charter. I just remember the language saying, allow city council members to sit on boards were allowed by state law. If, if, but if my amendment is not in line with state law, I'm going to lean with state law.
No, I'm, I'm just, I would just try and make sure that you understood that you're allowed. I didn't know if you were wanting to limit it or expand it for whatever reason. You're allowed, under state law, up to four to sit on the board. And, and this, this ties into actually a public comment that was made. There's no, there's no conflict between a sitting councilperson, a sitting councilperson, existing councilperson being on the board itself, because when you're operating those two roles, you're not operating in the same official capacity. So when you're operating as a, as an EDC, you know, board member, you are not acting as a council member, and then vice versa. So if there's, so if there happens to be, if you were to appoint four members of the council and they were sitting on the board, that doesn't make that a, a meeting of the council. It's only, it's only a meeting of the EDC. The same thing here, is if you had, if you had, happen to have four here, you're not.
Johnny, is, is your intent that, just bear with me for a second. Is your intent that state law and the charter says we can have up to four, but you would like it to be policy in the bylaws that it would be no more than three?
Yes.
Okay. So if everybody understands the intent of his amendment?
Yep.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right, there's a second by Councilwoman Simpson. All right, discussion.
Yeah, I, I do want to say a few, few things. The reason I seconded and voted to table this one, although a lot of that has been clarified as well, was one, that the EDC hadn't seen it, and two, I didn't know that there would be any more negotiation back and forth between the Economic Development Corporation and the city council. Those fears allayed, I will say, I do feel it is the best way forward. There's been a lot of discussion about the Economic Development Corporation for at least the last year and a half, because it's a type B corporation, and Dickinson is over 20,000 citizens, so things change. And whenever I asked, well, what's the plan, didn't really get one. It was, the EDC is special, we'll figure it out, you know, so-and-so is creative, we'll, we'll do something about it. Well, I, I feel we, we need to address that. And what I see from other cities on that path is the eventual putting the EDC under it, under the city, simply because you won't have to do all the legal and mental gymnastics to bring in the type of economic development you desire, that are limited by my understanding of type B corporations under the economic development. The other reason, and I, I kind of got this one on my own. When we're looking to amend something, I would really like to see a side-by-side comparison of what's being changed versus, you know, some strike-through, some red line, some ink, something. I, I italic, italic something as opposed to just voting on a kind of bald, blank, presented document. I was able to get an old pair of bylaws and compare them to the new, and, and I'm okay now with that. With that being said, those were some. With that being said, those were some of the reasons why originally I was not in favor of it. But going forward, I think we need something more substantial than trusting people to just figure it out, necessarily like a concrete plan.
Other questions or comments?
I have a statement to make, but also have a couple of amendments to suggest, so how would you like for me to go about that?
I rely.
Okay. I'll start by making a statement, I'll try and keep it brief. Understand the bylaws have been a point of contention for, I've served on the EDC for three years, and I know the bylaws have been a point of contention for at least two years. I do also understand that we cannot continue to kick the can down the road. However, I feel strongly that boards and commissions should be made up of qualified volunteers who can aid the governing body, being the city council, as subject matter experts through their representative assignments. With regards to the EDC, I do not believe it was ever the intent of state legislature for municipalities to stack boards or commissions in order to bypass the valuable input provided by citizens and volunteers. We must restore value to our volunteers and change the culture from the dais. Our volunteers must feel like their input is valuable and regarded by those of us who appoint them. These amended bylaws, once reviewed, revised as needed, and approved by the DDC board of directors, will set in place a system of governance that unclouds the role of each stakeholder and squarely sets accountability for the performance of the organization. Upon approval of the architecture of the amended bylaws, this council will no longer be able to point the finger at servant volunteers as appointed to the board of directors, as the accountability for the success or failure of the city's economic development apparatus will fall directly to the city council and the city manager, who will ultimately hold oversight of the organization's performance. The structure of the amended bylaws consider the relationship of the city and Economic Development Corporation, and actually clarifies that relationship in terms of a traditional corporate structure with the city manager performing the role of the parent company CEO, and the DDC subsisting as an independent entity performing the role of business development with its own board of directors and corporate structure. It is my opinion, these bylaws, nor the preceding administrative service agreement, attempt to create a department of the city. These bylaws simply clarify how the corporation will perform in its daily operations. That separation must be respected in order to maintain a system of checks and balances that prevents the city council or future city councils from abusing the Economic Development Corporation and its finances and going awry from the intent of the Texas state statutes establishing economic development corporations. My intent in further defining the role of volunteers that graciously serve on boards and commissions is to work with my fellow council members and city staff to review and reorganize our city's application and appointment process, providing transparency and clarity in board commission and service, and requiring anyone, including city council members who wish to serve on boards and commissions, to evidence their willingness and qualifications to do so. As far as the amendments, I have two amendments to the resolution itself.
Okay, go ahead and list those out first, if you would.
The first amendment is where it originally states, the city council desires to accept and approve the amended bylaws and directs the DDC to ratify the amended bylaws. My suggestion would be that the city council accept and approve the amended bylaws and direct the DDC to deliberate and take possible action on the amended bylaws at the next meeting.
So that's not a change to the bylaws themselves, but to the other cover sheet? Okay.
Resolution.
Got it, and what else?
Section two of that same resolution, the same change, where the city council does not direct the DDC to ratify the bylaws, but to deliberate and take possible action on.
Okay, so both those to the cover sheet?
Yes.
Okay, was there anything else?
Yes, this goes along to section two point zero one, that Mr. Simpson.
Okay.
Was also requesting to be amended. I also request, I think in the same spirit, an amendment that would say, at no time should the appointment of employees, officers, or city, officers of the city, or members of city council present a majority of the board of directors for greater than 90 days.
Okay. I think, is that for like a temporary measure or something, in case there was a?
Absolutely.
Vacancy here, okay, all right.
So should the city council decide, and I think that that is in accordance, we can do that within the DDC bylaws in accordance with the statute. The statute allows four members to serve, but the DDC can set their bylaws to state a time limit on that service, correct?
If I can just say real quick, before y'all decide on whether or not you're gonna amend, understand that y'all kind of do have, y'all do have opposing amendments, one is to permanent.
Yeah, about to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
All right, so do you accept that amendment? It would change, it would change, not really, I'd say in principle, but it would, you know, technically it would allow four people for like a brief period of time, but.
Yes.
Okay, you accept, and then the other change as well, in the cover sheet, okay, all right. And I assume, Councilwoman Simpson, do you?
Second.
Otherwise, we have to take a vote. Well, you both have to, we have to vote, if you don't want to.
No, no, I said it sounds like you're adding a P in there.
I'll do what I want. Councilwoman, you know, I said councilwoman, you're councilman.
Sounded like you said Simpson when referring to councilwoman.
Get your ears checked there.
It's gonna be confusing for a minute.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to struggle through that, y'all. Y'all gonna have to each be absent one meeting or alternate. Yeah, Councilman Wilson, you had a comment earlier?
No, well, yeah, I did have a comment, but you know, this, I listened to the comment from the audience about the EDC and him feeling that they did not need council members on that board. Well, you know, this is my 14th year on here, and they never have had him on there, but overwhelmingly, the people that voted two elections ago approved that they would like to see council members on that board. So it's a personal choice as to whether you want to or not. I mean, yes, you know, it takes up more of your time as a council member, because you go to like three meetings a month or something like that. But I've always had a big interest in that board, I have seen things that were done and things that need to be done and didn't get done. And as the city, as the board was formed, you know, they're originally told everybody they were gonna be using the money for streets, which they found out they couldn't do that forever, and then all of a sudden they got away from doing streets. So, and the board, you know, was divided into quarter cent sales tax. Quarter goes to the board, quarter goes to the streets, which the citizens voted for. Nobody took it away from the board, the citizens voted to do that. And there have been lots of concrete streets, lots of roads and drainage done with that money. So I mean, decisions that have been made along the way trying to improve the EDC, and if you'll go back and check, cities our size notoriously are made up of a council member as the board. Most cities our size do not have a separate board. And besides, you know, if the council is, if the council is the one appointing the board, everybody keeps thinking that the board is independent, it's not totally independent, it's not, as long as council's appointing the board, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'd like to add to this a little bit as well, earlier, the city attorney mentioned, you know, about the statute and the relationship between the city council and the EDC. I mean, the EDC, it is a, is a, basically, it's a little fancier, but it is a, it's like a committee that is part of the city government, like all the other committees. It reports to city council, we appoint and remove the members, it is an artifact of city government, it just is, it just is. And we're all on the same team here, and what it seems to me is that by not having an arrangement where things go through the city manager, which we have council manager form of government, that's the form of government that we amended the charter to have, that things should go through the city manager, and that by not doing that, we are continuing to create barriers, to increase the possibility of miscommunication, et cetera, and it's unnecessary, it's just unnecessary. So it helps us all to work together. Several of us were at a trade show promoting the city, trying to get developers to come in, trying to get retail people to come in. You know who they all wanted to talk to in addition to the EDC members? The mayor and the city manager, because we're all from the same organization, we are, and we can be integrated together. There's one other thing I'd like to address that doesn't have to do with this. Some of the opposition, so I think there's people that oppose this for like structural reasons, I can respect that. But there are others that oppose it because they're on a smear campaign against the city manager, and it's ridiculous. I've seen things online talking about how the city manager has bankrupted the previous city that he's in, and we're taking anything that somebody running for office in another city says is gospel, or the city manager that comes in later, makes decisions, and just basically throws somebody else under the bus. That's an old trick in city government. And I'm gonna ask some of these people, some of these people who used to be on council that are bringing this up, what's the city's fund balance, how many days do we have in reserves? Are we over revenue from this point, this year to last year? Are we, are we under budget, are we on target for budget, are we over budget, trending for the end of the year? Financial questions that were never asked, and it's much easier just to take hearsay, comments, go onto social media and put stuff out there, and that's what some people have chosen to do. So now that we actually have an agenda item dealing with this to talk about, I think it's utterly ridiculous and it's shameful the way people have treated this man. And, you know, for what it's worth, I apologize to you that you've come here and you've done a great job, from what I hear from people, and that you've been subjected to this kind of treatment, so, anyway. Are there any other questions or comments?
Call for the question.
All right, hearing none, we'll take this to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Councilman Decker voting nay. That will move us on to item, let's see here, five C. Consideration and possible action concerning a resolution of Dickinson, Texas, authorizing engineering, architectural, and surveying services for hazard mitigation grant HMGP programs through the Texas Division of Emergency Management TIDM, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an agreement for such services, providing for the incorporation of preamble and providing an effective date.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five D, consideration and possible action concerning a resolution of Dickinson, Texas, authorizing professional administration services for hazard mitigation grant HMGP programs through the Texas Division of Emergency Management TIDM, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an agreement for such services, providing for the incorporation of preamble and providing an effective date.
Move to approve.
There's a motion approved by Councilman Simpson.
Second.
The second by Councilman Brantley, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That'll move us on to item five E, consideration and possible action on the appointment of a city secretary. Mr. City Manager, could you please?
Yeah, pretty, so, Mayor, council, we went through a pretty great recruitment process. You know, we interviewed some folks, actually I had some council members as part of the interview committee, so thank you to those of you that were involved in that. And what we came to, you know, believe in our heart of hearts, at least from the group that worked with me on this, was that the right person for the role was our current deputy city secretary, Anna. Anna, for those of you, you know, one of the main reasons why I was very pleased to see that she rose to the top of the group was because, you know, she came in, never complained, worked alongside Carolyn Lynn to help get minutes up for months and months where we were behind, and really helped in turning that around, and has done so. If we're talking about, you know, who exudes, you know, being a true servant leader in her own right, and that's Anna. So I want to say first, thank you for the work you've already done so far for us, to help us get back to speed, to work alongside all of the staff to get that office back to where it needed to be. And so, so what I would be proposing to the council would be to be promoting our deputy city secretary, Anna Erbs, to the city secretary role, which is of course by charter, approved by council.
All right, is there a motion to accept the appointments?
So move.
Second.
All right, a motion by Councilman Wilson, second by Councilman Decker, any discussion?
Yes, mayor.
Councilman Simpson.
Thank you. I guess before we vote, I do want to take the opportunity to commend Carolyn Baskel for the work she did as interim secretary twice. Having to see it from afar the first time, and then up close this time, she did a yeoman's job of filling in, and like Theo said, catching us up on all the minutes and doing all of that. And I just want to take this opportunity to say it publicly, that I commend you for the great job you did.
Carolyn, are you sure? Or did you say Carolyn, okay.
Carolyn, thank you very much, Carolyn.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, moves us to item six, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Listen, adjourned by Councilman Wilson, second by Councilman Simpson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we adjourn at eight sixteen PM.